Conference will now be recorded.
All right, everybody. It is now 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. I call this regular meeting of council to order here in the RM office in Winnipeg. As always, this meeting is being recorded and be uploaded to our website for viewing by interested parties. I acknowledge we are on Treaty One territory, the traditional homeland of the Anishinaabe, Cree, Anasanaqoq Nation, Dakota, Assiniboine, and Denai people, and the homeland of the Red River Métis. We acknowledge that we need to work harder to learn and understand how reconciliation and collaboration with First Nations people should be incorporated into decisions and policies, genuinely and with a need to understand and build trust and associations with one another. Introductions around the table.
Ian Chatsin, Graham Landau.
Erwin Kamka.
Lon Turner.
And Penny McMorris. Thank you, guys.
Steve.
Oh, sorry, Steve. Sorry, Steve Atwood. All right, adoption of the agenda. Be it resolved, the agenda be adopted as presented. May I have a mover? Ian, thank you. Graham, second. A couple additions, gentlemen. Delegation Nicholas Juista. Procedural bylaw, first reading. Is that it?
Yep.
Anything else? All right, hearing nothing else. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. We'll move on to the minutes. Be it resolved, the minutes go October 21st, 2025, regular meeting, and special meeting of council be adopted as presented. May I have a mover? Erwin, thank you. Ian, second. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Nope. I agree with you. They're complete.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, thank you. You and I along. Okay, we normally have delegations at this point, so Mr. Juista, if you are available, please, oh, there you are. All right, and go ahead, Nicholas.
Okay, yeah, I just had my camera off while I was in my delegation. All right, I want to start by noting that last week Lon Turner sent me five separate emails refusing to allow me to present as a delegation at this meeting unless I sent him the full text of my presentation in advance for his approval, so he can make sure I would not mention any matters that he did not want raised. Bylaw 1602 does not give the CAO the authority to either require full text of delegations in advance, nor to determine what they can and cannot say. Lon only relented when I made clear that I was not.
Is this your topic of your presentation, or are you moving on to something else?
This will be a brief introduction. Lon only relented when I made clear that I was not going to accede to his demand and that I was well aware that he was acting contrary to the bylaws and outside his authority. My understanding is that I'm not the only delegation Lon attempted to control or suppress in this manner, and this is shocking behavior, but Lon implied that he was acting at the deli.
We have a municipal act in our bylaws that I interpret and evaluate and express my opinion to people that ask to be a delegate and also to council.
All right, well.
I appreciate your feedback. Duly noted. That is why the procedural bylaw will be changed shortly to make it very clear for everybody.
Fair enough.
Do you want to proceed with your topic for your delegation?
Yes.
Sorry, Penny, I know this is your job, but I told you I wouldn't do it.
Thank you.
The actual subject to my delegation is the recently passed Resolution 2025/143 Schedule A, the process for regulating slash permitting private structures on public property. Although this resolution followed a lengthy period of public input on the general issue, the actual scheduling process itself was not made public before it was approved by council two weeks ago. It was finally made public nearly a week afterward. Having read the actual process document, the most charitable description I can provide is that this was a rough first draft that was not ready to be approved by council. Less charitably, it was either incompetently drafted, or its flaws were a deliberate attempt to conceal from the public how this process will work and what its outcomes will be. The steps of the process are written in an unnecessarily confusing manner. For example, the same step, an appeal to council, is covered differently at both Section 1B 2.2 and 3.1B. As another example, even though Sections 3.1 and 3.2 respectively deal with existing structures that fail and that pass the evaluation criteria, it appears that the inspection described in Section 3.1 SubA was supposed to apply to both, since it is obvious structures cannot be determined to have met the criteria if no inspection has occurred. Furthermore, many aspects of the process are only vaguely described. The notes section at the end literally lists several important aspects as just TBD. Council should never have rushed to approve a process that was still in such an unfinished state. Perhaps most importantly, this process document is unclear and contradictory about how decisions will actually be made. Section 2, the so-called evaluation criteria section, is brief. It provides a couple of vaguely described criteria for, quote, "safety and design and structure," and, quote, "impact on erosion," essentially asking the reader to fill in the blanks about how those will be evaluated, and then lists, quote, "impact on BB character as per development plan" in Section 2.14E of ZBL number 1651. Although it is understandable that this process document might choose to incorporate the requirements of the development plan in the zoning bylaw by reference rather than restating them all, it should not have limited that reference to, quote, "impact on BB character." All of the requirements of the development plan and the zoning bylaw, including but not limited to impact on BB character, must be used to evaluate these structures. These include the fuller requirement of zoning bylaw, Section 2.14, that, quote, "Development must not impose undue risk to people, property, or water quality, nor interfere with or unduly compromise the character, enjoyment, or sustainability of private or public property. Existing recreational uses and areas should be protected from potentially incompatible land uses that may threaten the ongoing viability of those areas in accordance with the development plan." Relevant sections of the development plan include Sections 3.2.2 on natural environment, 3.2.3 on flooding, erosion, slope stability, 3.2.4 on water and shoreland, and 3.2.6 on outdoor recreational resources, all of which contain relevant objectives and policies that must be considered. Regardless, however, no step in this process actually refers to Section 2, instead providing different criteria each time a decision is mentioned, or seemingly leading some decisions to council's unlimited discretion. At best, this is sloppy drafting. All steps with decisions should have referred to Section 2 to ensure consistent criteria throughout the process. At worst, this was deliberate, so that crucial decisions would be made without considering all the relevant criteria. For example, according to Section 3.1 SubA, "The initial inspections will be done by so-called RMVB-designated officer using a standardized inspection checklist," which is listed as TBD, of course, "to, quote, catalog conditions of each structure and identify it as an unsafe or derelict structure, or as having a negative impact on the character of BB," unquote. Apparently, the designated officer will not have to consider other criteria listed in Section 2, such as erosion, nor criteria not currently listed in Section 2, but that should have been, since they are required by the development plan and the zoning bylaw, as I just mentioned. Of course, the designated officer would have no ability to make such evaluations, whether about the safety of structures constructed on eroding and unstable sandbanks, or about the impact of the structures upon the banks unless they have the NISSER qualifications. This is why a qualified engineer should conduct these inspections, as was recommended by Steve Topping, the geotechnical engineer who advised SAC. This process instead suggests that only if the unqualified designated officer somehow identifies that a structure is unsafe or derelict, then the RMVB may require professional engineering assessment under Section 3.1BAI. Council has not explained why they did not follow Mr. Topping's recommendation that a qualified engineer must evaluate all structures to determine their safety and suitability in the fragile riparian area. It is also unclear how the character of BB will be evaluated by the designated officer. One would think that in a recreational beach community, with beach literally in the name Victoria Beach, that the character of BB would mean preserving the public beaches, both as leisure sites and as fragile natural environments, to the greatest extent possible. Unfortunately, this council has given reason to doubt that this is how they understand the character of BB. Furthermore, regardless of who performs the evaluation or what criteria use to make a decision, according to Section 3.1B, only structures that are, quote, "deemed unsafe or derelict," unquote, will cause the RMV to issue notices for repair or removal. And while, of course, unsafe structures should be removed, or possibly repaired, as the case may be, this gets to the heart of the issue. This entire process simply does not conceive at any point of the possibility that private structures should not be permitted on public land for any reason other than structural problems causing safety issues. I'll get back in a second, but first I want to mention that even if the structure is deemed unsafe, according to this process, the owner can appeal to council with a seemingly unlimited authority to approve it regardless under Section 3.2A. To repeat, this process specifically allows council to permit private structures to remain in place on our public beaches even after they've been determined to be unsafe. And given the words and actions of this council, it is absolutely clear that some members of this council are unwilling, under any circumstances, to tell the owner of a private property adjacent to the public beaches that they cannot build whatever they want on our public land. Now, as I just mentioned, nothing in this process even contemplates as a possibility the removal of any structures for any reason except, A, no one claims them, or B, they are found to be structurally unsound, and also council, surprisingly, declines just permit them anyway. There is nothing in this process that would allow private structures that were built on our public land without authorization to be removed because of their negative environmental impact, because they will hasten erosion, because they will interfere with the public use of our beaches, or because they otherwise harm the character of our beaches, let alone because they were constructed in violation of multiple municipal bylaws. Council has still never adequately justified why they refuse to use the enforcement mechanisms of those bylaws, such as Bylaw 1598 Sections 1 and 2, which require any persons who perform work on municipal property without prior written authorization to restore it and pay a fine. At the very least, all existing bylaws, including Bylaw 1598, should be considered relevant criteria for evaluating unauthorized structures on public land. Section 3.3 of this process document regarding future construction also does not contemplate that council might refuse to permit private structures on our public beaches in order to preserve the beach, sorry, in order to preserve the beaches, only that there might be engineering requirements which the structures would have to meet. Frankly, though, it is almost refreshing that Section 3.3 actually does seem to at least allude to the requirement in the development plan Section 3.2.3B2 that structures built in the riparian area must undergo, quote, "a proper geotechnical engineering or environmental assessment," unquote, which, of course, continues to apply. Unfortunately, this process appears to exempt structures that have already been built without authorization from this requirement of development plan, as I just mentioned, unless they are deemed unsafe prior to such assessment. But that contradiction raises another glaring oversight. This process does not address what will happen when some private property owners simply continue to build whatever they want on public land without approval if they don't want to meet these new requirements. They've ignored the existing bylaws, and they ignored the recent and redundant so-called moratorium, because council has made clear there will be no consequences. Why would anyone expect them to follow this new process? I mean, sure, some property owners may choose to follow it, but given everything that's transpired, it is clear that some of them will ignore it as they've ignored all existing bylaws. And what will happen then? I think that the members of this council have made clear that they will continue to do what they have been doing. They'll allow the illegal construction of private structures on public land. Near the end of this document, it states that, quote, "Council and all designated staff intend to pursue this activity with the utmost respect and cooperation with all who might be involved," unquote. I would hope that council and staff understand that this entire community is involved in the future of our beaches. And yet I think it is clear from council's words and actions that many of you do not concern, that many of you consider the only people with a stake in this issue to be the private property owners who wish to build structures on our public beaches or have illegally done so already, not the rest of us. And certainly, council members have failed to show the utmost respect.
Your time is up. Thank you. You've given us lots to think about. Appreciate your presentations.
I need to make a comment here if you're not gonna. I can see why there's a lot of division in this community right now. If no one else read it, read that document and heard anything else but what you just spoke about, I'm not sure that you fully read that document and you read it and you fully understood it, because it's quite clear there's a few things to be determined yet, but the evaluation criteria was solid. Everything is going to be evaluated. There's going to be pictures taken. There's going to be evaluation by the engineer. How you just figured that it's going to be an unqualified designated officer, that's an assumption that you made. There's a lot of other assumptions that you made listening to this, that really I, you know, I feel bad for this community if this is what happens and the own people only listen to you and they don't get the full picture.
All right.
Can I respond to Mr. Turner's comment?
Go right ahead. I don't care.
Well, I would ask the chair, as Mr. Turner does, not the chair of this meeting. May I respond to Mr. Turner's comment?
Sure.
Thank you. I certainly encourage the members of this community to read this process document. I do acknowledge that it is possible that the designated officer will be a qualified engineer, but the process actually doesn't require this and states that an engineering assessment is only required after the designated officer says the structure is unsafe. I have read this process in its entirety. I encourage everyone else to do so. My criticisms stand.
Thank you very much. All right. Council have any other comments?
Will we be receiving the written document relatively soon?
Will we receive your comments in writing, Nicholas?
Yes, I'll provide them in writing.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Thank you very much. We will move on to accounts and finances. To be resolved, the following accounts be approved for payment, check 13842 to 13872 in the amount of $81,437.93. May I have a mover? Ian, thank you. Second. Graham, thank you. Any comments on this, Ian?
Just a couple. Trail maps is about $6,500. First, revenue for the Ministry of Finance, about $8,500. Website management is $6,000. Is that a one-time fee?
Which one are you talking about?
The website.
Yeah, it's an annual. Yeah.
Of course, the biggest chunk is the employee benefits, up around $31,000. Then, the municipal hydro, excuse me, is $8,500, and I noticed that top of that was a blue light in. I was wondering, is that the heat, or why does that be so high?
Oh. What I think happened is that, you know, every year, Hydro does their annualization in September. So it was off for quite a while, so the hydro payments went down, and then all of a sudden, boom, fired back up. So we caught up.
It was very, it was rather high consumption when they make the heat guards for boring. So this is not on.
And that does get billed to the.
I've had that experience after a winter, you get a bill. A lot of money. Because it's a estimate. Okay, so that's what I have. Thank you.
Any other comments on the finances, gentlemen? All those in favor? Carrie, Steve? Thank you. Business arising with previous minutes, the BB map signage study. I trust everyone had an opportunity to look at it. I know the maps were small, but you could sort of expand them on your computer. We, for everyone's benefit, we engaged the services of HTFC Planning and Design with two supporting grants from Manitoba Trails and Trans-Canada Trails to remap our trails and provide us with summer and winter maps and signage suggestions, which was not in this study. So all the trails were walked or cycled by someone with very good local knowledge, grew up in the community, so I'm really pleased with how they turned out. We had input from the Cross Country Ski Group, from the BB Trails Committee, from the BB Snow Drifters, and I was the council representative on this, so is there any comments on the mapping? I believe we're also supposed to be getting a digital copy so that we can make, make our own copies. Anyways, any comments? Questions?
Just trying to remember, was this the, was, they're supposed to merge this in IT or something? This is going back a few months. I'm trying to remember what the details were. Is this the project that you were working on, or was it something else?
No, this was the project I was working on. I guess, I think we should be somehow.
Was this on GPS, like the Google, for example?
We did not do that.
I, I think they were going to amalgamate with that Ops Ready program with the fire department.
But we didn't have.
We're not, yeah, we haven't moved forward with Ops Ready yet.
I think it's very nicely done. Best we've had ever.
Yeah, so there was one trail that was removed because it was in part on private property. So we didn't realize that, but Mr. Gawaki did, so that one trail was removed. But otherwise, this is what we have, and I think it makes great sense. I know Steve wanted summer and winter maps for a long time, I think. So I think they've done a great job. And they reminded us that there's more trails, grants coming up in early January if we want to apply for, for signage this year, maybe next year. Some help with signage. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and I don't have to do anything more. Get the digital copy, hopefully, we can put on our website, hopefully.
No, I have a digital copy. They're rather large files, yeah, I can get those off from them.
Is there any way we could put it on?
Yep.
Okay. On the website, so it'd be, just click on it?
Yep.
Is it possible to put the file on the website, the digital download?
I think so.
Like a PDF?
I can upload the file to the link. Yeah, I'll try that. Yep.
That would be useful.
Yeah.
A complete investigation. Very valuable.
And part of the study was to show us where to put wayfinding signs, that, you know, important intersections, because some of the trails do intersect. And if you're like me and are directionally challenged, that would be handy.
It's gone on to suggest the size and shape.
Not to get more lost, yeah.
Three categories.
Yeah, and then there's the bigger trailhead signs.
We may have to wait for another grant opportunity to pay for some of the signs. Some of the large ones are, they're going to be pretty expensive, but they certainly do with one.
Yeah, yeah, so. Okay, any other comments on the mapping?
Nope, no.
Great.
Well, good.
Thank you. It wasn't me. It was a combination effort and mostly, mostly the landscape.
Only one flat tire, I think.
Yeah, one flat tire on Matthew's bike. All right, going on to other business. The Shoreline Advisory Committee appointee, we have a resolution, be it resolved to appoint, council consensus was Jeff Kirbison to the Shoreline Advisory Committee as the representative for the vehicle restricted area non-shoreline position. May I have a mover? Ian, thank you. Second. Graham. Any comments, gentlemen? Steve?
I have comments, but I thought that we weren't able to have comments on this.
Well, just in terms of, I don't think it's appropriate to be naming under other individuals who also applied. That's all that I, my concern is they may not want their names out there, but.
I, I, I think that the, the people who had applied, there was a name that I would substantially prefer, but from what I was told, that's as far as I can take this.
Well, three council members, you know, the majority of council went Mr. Kirbison, and I have talked with him. He accepted. Had he not accepted, we would have been back at the drawing board. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm, I'm just going with what I was told in the email, so that's as far as we can take the conversation.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Steve, thank you. Motion carried. Moving on to the parking lots, gate installation. Be it resolved to approve for this year the installation of two new gates plus fencing connections at the BB parking lot for best weight quote 79.71 for $8,464 plus taxes. May I have a mover? Erwin, thank you. Second. Graham. Graham or Erwin, do you want to speak to this?
I personally walked the parking lot with Kevin Attia and our chief constable, and the two gates will significantly improve our ability to evacuate people that are evacuated. One gate was very small, and it's been widened, and then it's a new gate being installed. So we want to improve the next part of the plan. The next spring will be to develop organized evacuation scheme to help people know which is the best way to go. Without that, I can't imagine the chaos that could result in the event of an evacuation emergency. So we're going to work on improving that situation. I too discussed this at somewhere visiting the site with our, our Public Works weekend, Dane, and he was partially responsible for soliciting the quotes. So he's, he's very much in favor of this. They are on site and they're doing the prep work so that the two gates can hopefully be accomplished this year before freezing. There is a phase two to this project, six hundred feet of that thing, but we're going to decide to defer that to the spring, which would also give us the opportunity to maybe get one or two more posts just to make sure that we're getting the best deal overall. But this meets with pretty well everybody's approval, Public Works Police. Where would the new fencing go? Along the, along the south border of the, of the expanded part.
Large here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that's a separate issue, and it's a much bigger dollar value, so it has to be scrutinized pretty carefully, but they're working towards that. This looks good so far.
And where do the gates go?
Right at the southeast corner. Southeast corner, yeah.
The north.
East corner.
And the northeast one.
No, two new gates. It would be southwest corner, going on to Eighth Avenue, and the other one would be the northeast. It's going to go right by the Bell facility that's there.
Bell and T S building.
On the PTH 59.
Old to be able to use their driver? Great.
Yeah.
And it's a gate, like a moon gate.
Fencing gate, yeah.
Big steel gate on wheels.
And it's for, it's for egress, not access. Emergency. Steve, did you have a comment?
I mean, the, the only issue that, well, I mean, there's, there's, there's several things, but one of them is that there needs to be a fairly large signage that goes on to these emergency exits so people know what they are, because most people in the community don't even know that there is, that there is even one emergency exit at this point. The location of this football-sized expansion, the biggest problem is that the emergency exit runs directly through it. So that's going to cause a lot more congestion during an evacuation. So that's a fairly large problem. But, I mean, just in terms of what the general plan is, those would be my two biggest comments.
Any, any evacuation would, of course, require police intervention directing traffic. There will be people on site at each of these locations to try and maintain some stability and proper controls. So we, and you're quite right, Steve, we can't just.
Their chief officer's work has already put considerable thought into it, and the plan is next spring. Fill in more details.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Nope. Was there a resolution associated with accepting the vote?
Yep, she just read it.
Just read it? Yeah, so I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Oh, I got barbed on your question. In favor.
Steve, in favor or opposed?
Yes, I'm in, I'm in favor of it. I just have some issues.
Well, I think we should be able to address some of those issues as they move forward, like that's get these two gates in. Right now, they're kind of wide open, wide open, but they're open, so people can access them. We don't want that, right? We want to leave them as exits, not entrances. All right. Moving on to shoreline. Patricia and Arthur Protection Proposal for the Shoreline Advisory Committee, whereas council has been presented with an application for erosion protection for the Patricia and Arthur reaches, and council has scheduled a conditional use public hearing for the 18th of November, 2025, to hear public presentations. Therefore, be it resolved to refer this application to the Shoreline Advisory Committee for recommendations to deny, approve, or approve the application with conditions. Further be it resolved to have these recommendations provided to council prior to the regular council meeting scheduled on the 9th of December, 2025. May I have a mover? Erwin, thank you. Ian, second. Comments, gentlemen? Discussion?
Are the, are these individuals to pay for the?
That's my understanding. The RM will though be involved in anything on our property, which is the Patricia road allowance.
Yeah, similarly.
Patricia stairs.
Right. Part and parcel of this is, we, we built up the Patricia stairs, which are certainly, I've done this. That's one of our stairs that was responsible.
And while I was away or not at the council meeting, you approved the drainage.
It's very exciting.
Okay, so Steve, do you have a comment? I thought I saw your hand.
Yeah, basically what's happened in the last couple of council meetings makes it virtually impossible for me to vote for this. virtually impossible for me to vote for this, for one simple reason, which is that this erosion protection can be used as justification for building stairs and decks, because if the revetment is there, as supposedly a strategy to fortify the bank against erosion, then a very easy argument can be made that they can then put stairs and decks on top of it, and we have one example already on Patricia, where there was a staircase going over top of the, of the armament there, so...
Sorry, Steve, on Patricia?
Uh, yes, yeah, there is a metal, a metal staircase that was placed over top, over top of the rocks, so at least I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure it's on Patricia, I might be wrong, I thought it was on Patricia, but I distinctly remember, one of the, one of the pictures that I saw was inside of the municipality, it wasn't the VRA, I swear it was on Patricia, but maybe I'm mistaken about the exact location of it. But this could be used as a justification to put downstairs or deck, saying that, well, the armament's there, therefore erosion won't happen, and that is one of the biggest problems about what happened at the last meeting, is that it gives that justification now, so I can no longer vote in favor of any armament.
But, but there are fail safes, if you will, I know some people wouldn't call them that, wouldn't agree with that, if you do want to put in a set of stairs, it requires a conditional use public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and council of the day, whoever they may be, is elected to make that decision and to decide after hearing what comes from the public hearing, whether or not to allow decks or stairs, so their council still has some say in that.
It seems as though the only defense that the backlot owners have to try to stop stairs and decks from being installed along the bank is whether or not an engineer is going to sign off on it, based on the likelihood of erosion, so if there's fortification along the bank, then that increases the likelihood that these structures are going to be built along the bank, so it makes it impossible for...
We'll be back talking about the vetment of stairs.
Erwin had his hand up and then, okay, thank you, Steve.
The resolution on the table simply is asking SAC to review the vetment project. Council is not being asked today to approve or disapprove of the vetment, it's simply asking SAC to review it, so let's move on.
Well, I mean, again, what SAC is supposed to do, as well as all committees around any issues that come up in their, in their wheelhouse, is to consider all issues, this is a fairly major issue, is that to suggest or approve this particular structure opens up a can of worms whereby some shoreline, some shoreline owners may use this as a justification, if approved, to then request for staircases and decks, because now that the shoreline is armed, then the likelihood of erosion is mitigated, and that can be a very easy argument to make, meaning that backlot owners will lose that ability to say that, there's no engineering study to say that this, you know, that structure's going to cause issues.
There will be opportunities on November eighteenth for delegations to present at this public hearing, and it should be pointed out, the dividing line between Patricia and Arthur, they, this proposal to refer to SAC, the Patricia stairs are our stairs, it's really just reinforcing and improving our set of stairs so that they come, so that they last fully comply with our accessibility standards, so it's just a rebuild of our stairs, which we put forward to next year, because it was, it's going to be a bit expensive.
I can also add that this, this proposal is on our website for anyone to view or review. The public hearing is in two weeks' time, we follow the planning act in terms of advising everyone within a certain radius, knowing full well that the beaches are public for everyone, not just within that hundred meter, hundred yard radius, whatever that might be, so the public hearing will also allow residents to have a voice and to have a say, and we look, I'm sure we'll hear from people on the eighteenth. So, back to this resolution, which is merely to, not merely, but which is to refer this to the Shoreline Advisory Committee, which is what residents wanted, they wanted a Shoreline Advisory Committee to review these types of projects, that's what we're doing, to start, and, and we will hear from shoreline people on, or the shoreline project people on the eighteenth prior to the public hearing, at the same time. Any further discussion on this resolution to refer this to the Shoreline Advisory Committee?
Nope.
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Steve, thank you.
Are you opposing or abstaining, Steve?
Opposing.
You're opposed, okay.
So Steve, to be clear, you don't want SAC to review this project?
No. I think I've made my clear, my, my feelings about SAC and the entire process quite clear. If you want, we can have an open discussion about it, or we can just leave it right there.
I think we'll leave it right there. All right, thank you, gentlemen, moving on to the emergency plan for twenty-twenty-six. Be it resolved, the R twenty-twenty-six RMDB emergency plan be approved and submitted to the Emergency Measures Organization, may I have a mover? Thank you, Ian, second. Graham, thank you. This is an annual thing, an annual plan that we have to provide to the province, I'm very grateful for Shelley Napier, our emergency consultant, for updating it, getting it ready to go, I had a glitch, but Lawn showed me how to get into the schedules that are included, so it's a big document, I hope council's had a chance to look at it. Any comments or concerns or questions?
There were no substantial changes to...
No, it's actually shorter, Shelley sort of condensed it a bit with provincial awareness and the provincial, provincial approval, they were quite happy.
But it's an annual requirement.
It's an annual...
It's housekeeping activity, but more than, more than housekeeping.
More than housekeeping, this is our plan, in case of an emergency, this is what council and Lawn will try to, it'll be our bible. Any other comments?
No.
Go ahead, Steve.
My issue is more on the fire that was in Travers Bay last year, and the reason I bring this, or this past summer, and the reason I bring this last spring, sorry, the reason I bring that up is because in our, the, the emergency drill that we went through is a very similar situation, we didn't want to enact this, I just want to be clear, that council needs to be willing to gather as per our, as, as per what this document says, and be willing to enact it immediately if there's even a slight risk to the community, because we've been hesitant, we showed that during that springtime fire, and I just need to be clear that we need to be ready to enact this document at any time.
And I think we would, we would be, we have to be, I was on site at that fire, and I told you repeatedly, as we were texting, that the advice I was given was it was not going to impact Victoria Beach, and we did not need to open up an E O C or do anything like that, it was all purely RM Alexander, I was on scene, our fire department was on scene, I was getting information as quickly as I could, and there was no risk at that time to our community, I know some people on social media thought that, social media is sometimes a head, but not always accurate, I think that's fair to say.
That's true.
So, we would, we would put this into effect, Steve, but we're not going to put it into effect if it's not necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Who makes, who makes the call on it? Does that not make right of fire chief, in, in terms of advising you on that issue?
The fire chief would have advised us if the fire was moving rapidly in our direction, and he, it was not. So, I think we did, we did what we could from our perspective, with was an RM Alexander issue, it was not our issue, but I was there, and our fire department were there, so had something been required, I was in touch with Lawn, he did send out some communications, so, you know, we weren't sitting around having a drink. So I'll get back to the approval and submission for the EMO organization, Emergency Measures Organization, any further discussion on this resolution?
Nope.
All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you, Steve. All right, moving on to Community Futures, be it resolved to appoint Counselor Randall as the RMDB twenty-twenty-six Board Rep for Community Futures Winnipeg Ritter, you have a mover? Ian, Erwin, thank you, Steve, second, thank you. I can be your alternate as well, Graham, I've been there a few times, it's an easy enough thing to attend usually.
Yes, but I've been the, the delegate for quite a few years, so I feel obliged to say if any other counselor would like to take over this position, they're welcome to it, but if you, if it's the role of counselor, I should be, I should carry on, and, you want to trade it for SAC? No, I'm not, for a million dollars. I did a very great job, I think, so much, I'm, I'm going to do a fire all day, yeah. All right, no further discussion.
And it's during the daytime, so that doesn't leave Steve an opportunity, so...
Yeah, most of the board meetings are separate, but Counselor Randall's done an excellent job, but, well, not as good as I should have, my mobility has been somewhat restricted, but I'm still close to Sherwin and the game with CF Pilar, so, all carry on, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you, surprisingly, no one's, no one's not in favor of that one, Graham.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll move on to the RM of Dothan Resolution. I think I'll just read, read a couple of the final wherabras, if that's all right. The lengthy Resolution in Support for Canola Farmer Assistance, the top it's, whereas the government of Canada's imposed tariffs on Chinese electric vehicles, whereas the government has applied supports to the EV and supporting industries, including but not limited to the manufacturing of batteries, et cetera, and they have, this has resulted in reciprocal tariffs from China on ag products, therefore be it resolved, the RM of Dothan lobby the federal and provincial governments with these concerns, further be it resolved, the RM of Dothan, as the Association of Natural Municipalities and Federation of Canadian Municipalities, lobby the federal and provincial governments for compensatory payments to affected agricultural and related food products equal to and in line with those payments that have been made to the automotive industry on a per capita or basis, the impact on Canadian gross domestic products. This is, okay, may I have a mover? Erwin, thank you, Ian, second, this is something that communities do, right, they'll, they'll write up a resolution, send it to other communities for their support, and then I would imagine they're trying to take this to the AMM in November, if it's not already.
Yes, indeed, we've, we've asked surrounding municipalities to join with us on some cars that's close to our heart, and they've generally cooperated very well, so there's certainly no good reason for us to decline this.
As the grandson of a farmer, I'm happy to support this measure, it seems that canola farmers are kind of collateral damage, I have no idea what, you know, raising canola has got to do with EV cars, but why one is being, you know, used as a pawn against the others, it's really disappointing, the government's got to recognize that farmers are very, very important, and they contribute a huge amount to our economy.
Steve, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have no issues with supporting farmers, the biggest problem that I see with this is the fact that, as far as I know, nobody at the AMM is intricately involved in the discussions with China, and none of us know as to what's going to happen with, you know, the insanity of the US, this is a far larger issue, and the budget was just released, we have to have some faith in, in the federal government that they're trying to do the best for everyone, I find it hard to believe that they would have forgotten about the farmers, although obviously farmers do take a hit from time to time, I just have an issue with the fact that this is trying to, so stick our nose where it doesn't really belong, I mean, I, I don't, again, I don't have a, I don't have a problem supporting, supporting farmers, it's just, this just seems outside of the wheelhouse of, especially a, like, resort municipality more than anything.
Yeah, we don't have any farmers in our municipality that it's directly impacting, but impacts on farms and farmers directly impact all of us in our food choices, right, and what's available to us, so...
Well, the impact of a seventy-five percent tariff on hard canola is, it ranks right up there with all the worst of the trophies, it's cruel and unusual, and I think you should, during the RM of Dothan in their case, I think...
Prime Minister Carney just met with China, and apparently their discussions went really well, and China and the US are not getting along very well right now at all, and China is desperate for more canola, so if the means were as productive as they say, then it is possible, and we don't know, because, as I said, none, the AMM and none of the farmers have been in those discussions, it's entirely possible that China opens up to Canada, the canola, the canola industry, because again, they're desperate for canola right now, so I just, I, I think on this, with how fragile everything is, we have to have some, some trust in, in the federal government right now, that they know a lot more than we do, when it comes to these negotiations, so I just, I don't know that this is in the wheelhouse of, of municipalities to, like, you know, if, if, if they want to lobby the government in general, fine, but this is just so specific, I, I don't know, I just don't really feel comfortable with this one.
Ian, you were going to say?
Yeah, no, I was going to say I'm apathetic. That's what we're doing, we're showing our support. And that's what we do, we want to reach out to the federal government with a number of communities' climate, I think it's all, whether we can solve the problem, I mean...
Specifically asking, oh, sorry, sorry, I didn't realize you weren't done.
This, this, Dothan will be taking this up with the AMM, hopefully there'll be a consensus of municipalities, and it'll eventually go to the federal government, of course, you know, of every, but it's, I, I think we have to demonstrate our willingness to, to support.
All right, and any further discussion before I call a question? All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Opposed, I'm just going to abstain, it's just I don't feel comfortable with this.
Okay, thank you. All right, in addition to the agenda was the procedural bylaw, first reading, to me for that.
That's the resolution.
Be it resolved to give procedures bylaw number one six five five, first reading, may I have a mover? Ian, thank you, second. Graham, thank you. Thank you to Lawn and some council who had some input on improving this bylaw, updating it. Most of the changes council will notice are under the delegation's setting, tap, and it's become pretty clear in the last few council meetings that some delegations have had, been very disrespectful, rude, and attacked council and council members, and we have to try and find a way to bring respectability. And we have to try and find a way to bring respectability back. You can disagree, but you don't have to be disrespectful. So I think that's mostly what is addressed in this bylaw, and it's first reading, so can be amended.
I think the other thing, it's, it's providing is an opportunity for councillors to be prepared. I mean, to have people talk with that idea and present for 10 minutes in. Kind of period, it's hard to, people ask the question if we haven't given it any thought. So we'll just give this chance to find out what people's concerns are and therefore prepare for it and ask.
Today, we had a very interesting delegation, very complex, very detailed, and quite frankly, after a while, I got lost. If I had a chance to review that document in advance, then we would be in a position to comment on that.
It was a lot of detail in that.
To better, I appreciate it.
Preferring to different bylaw section. It's hard to know exactly.
I think this is a well drafted amendment to 1655. If we pass first reading, you can go up on our website, we're all received, and then we'll deal with second and third way reading as we rule.
Doesn't have to, but if you want it on here, it's fine. It's not subject to a public hearing.
Steve, go ahead.
So I don't, I, I'm having a lot of problems with all of these changes. I mean, just to be clear, to try to address disrespect, we got rid of question period. And then we started to try to get more of a handle on basic questions that were being asked of councillor. And now, according to this, with 10.1. We are requiring that a written copy of the presentation, if requested by the, sorry. That, I'll just read the whole thing for 10 point run rather than a snippet. To allow members of council to prepare for delegations, all presenters shall register with the CAO. At least seven days before the council meeting and advise the CAO of the topic and scope of the presentation. Here's the addition, and provide a written copy of the presentation if requested by the mayor and CAO. I don't understand why this is necessary to put in. And typically, these types of things would be in the hands of the CAO. And for exactly the issues that Erwin just raised, which is that, you know, if you have a complex discussion. And maybe it's appropriate to have some, something written out so councillor can review it at a time. But still, this is making it more difficult for residents to really present to us. So I don't understand the general objective of this. I also don't understand as to what criteria. You know, this, this request is going to be written, and there's no sort of breakdown of that. My other issue is that.
What section are you referring to there?
I mean, it's sort of generally, well, I mean, with a lot of these. But, and, you know, what criteria are you using to say that, okay, under, under these specific situations? That's when we're going to be asking for a written, a write-up ahead of time.
Steve, the reason it's in there, sorry if I can speak to this. I did ask the delegation for a written presentation beforehand, which would have been beneficial for tonight for all of us, I think. But he refused to do it, because it's not specifically written in our bylaw. That's why these changes are in here. It's only if we're contacted by the CAO or mayor, that's, I mean, not everybody's going to be requested to do that.
Maybe they should be.
But I don't understand Steve's point. Are you saying just Lon should make that decision and not Penny? Is that what you're saying?
Well, here, here's, here's one of the biggest problems is that. And, and this, and it's not just this council, it's any council in the future, which is that you don't want. Politicians deciding as to when something can be presented, can't be presented, when they have to do X, Y, and Z. That is supposed to be up to the administrators who have clear guidelines from council. So then that way it becomes as neutral as possible. If you have the mayor in the deci- in the decision process of what can and can't happen in terms of delegations. Then that opens up favoritism or bias. Or maybe I'm going to select these people to be heard, these people not to be heard. It's, it's, the mayor in this section should not have the power. That should be in the hands of administrators. The reason why you have administrators is to, to be as neutral as possible. You have to have that separation.
I don't think this is saying that at all, Steve. Penny wouldn't have the, make a decision as to whether someone could speak or not. She, she and Lon would decide whether it's important to have a copy of the presentation. That's a different point.
Okay, so, so if I can just read some of the rest of these. At the discretion of the CAO and mayor, may refuse to hear a delegation on a policy matter it has already made a decision on. Within, within the past 12 months unless new and significant information is provided. At the discretion of the CAO and mayor, may refuse to hear a delegation due to prior disruptive behavior. Where the person has previously failed to maintain order and decorum, use offensive language, spread hate towards the municipality. And individual council members, or council at large, or spread misinformation on social media, or disobey the rules of procedure. At the discretion of the CAO and mayor, may refuse to hear a delegation due to procedural non-compliance. Where the delegation failed to follow the required application process or, or missed this submission deadline. At the discretion of the CAO and mayor, any delegation who is subject to clause 10.4 through 10.7. May, may add to the next council meeting agenda, the delegates' topics, scope, and full written presentation. For council resolution to deny or approve the delegation to present at the next or, or future regular council meeting.
What's your point? What's your point?
Can I just, can I just interject for a minute here? Because in our existing bylaw, procedural bylaw, section seven, agenda. A draft agenda of each regular meeting of council as prepared by the CAO and we. I'm not leaving more, but the, the mayor, which has been changed, and the CAO generally do set the agenda. So I would argue that that's why that terminology is in there, mayor and CAO, because we do set the agenda.
Yes, but you don't want a politician having this type of power to determine as to when somebody can present to council. That should be an administrative thing, that shouldn't be in the power of politicians. So I would, if, if we want to go with this, my request, vehement request would be. In the section of delegations to remove mayor and leave these decisions only in the power of an administrator. So then that way is taking the, the neutral parties away from the politicians.
I'm fine with that. The only reason I put both in there was because maybe to have a second set of eyes on a delegation, right? You may, like, that's why it says CAO and mayor and not just CAO or mayor. I thought having two separate eyes on a delegation would, I might think why otherwise, and the mayor may think otherwise. I thought between the two, it's certainly not, the way, I, I mean, I wrote, I guess I wrote this for you guys. And you seem to be okay with this until now. I don't mean to, you know, for you guys not to hear somebody speak about anything they want to. But just to be able to ask for the written presentation, because I was challenged on it before. And then I was also challenged on the authority of a CAO to ask for this. That's why this has been verdict. Considerable detail may be too much, that's for you guys to decide. But I, you know, it doesn't prevent anybody from speaking. The only one maybe is if you've already made a decision on, on a topic. But as far as my understanding of municipal law and delegations, you know, people come to speak to councillor to put right their input. On a decision or an issue that they have to decide. Not just to come to council meeting and be a delegate complaint. Or, or, you know, complaints are fine, but as long as there's constructive, you know. Like, I can disagree with all of you guys about everything, but we'll sit and have a civil conversation about maybe, okay, this could be better, this could be better. Let's tweak that a little bit, maybe should work like this. So I hope no one gets the impression that this is ever meant to, like, stop anybody from speaking, it's just.
I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for a written presentation in advance. If you know you want to speak seven days ahead of a council meeting, which is when you have to register. You must know what you want to speak about, and that will allow the person wanting to be a delegation to be on topic. And it will allow council to have the information beforehand, so that we can at least have a, perhaps a better discussion. If the opportunity comes, you know, if it's a bit of back and forth. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for a written presentation than it is in some other municipal, municipalities procedural bylaws.
And this seven days, you know, as seven days in advance. We all know that this seven days was introduced to give council a chance to study the contents of the delegation. Say, if we want to make a delegation to council, and we say, well, would you mind telling us what it's all about, please? What's the greatest amount of that?
Give us a chance to study the material in advance so that we can make intelligent comments, maybe even ask intelligent questions.
Well, I like this example this evening. I think. First, he handed his presentation in. He just choked on it because the bylaw wasn't clear on whether he should or not. That's what we're trying to change.
Go ahead, Steve, sorry.
Change. I mean, I, I have issues with, with these sections that have been added. But at the very least, to make it more neutral, is to remove the power. Of just one politician, say, CAO and councils, or, or maybe with CAO and the. And the agreement of council or something along those lines. Just basically where the CEO is going to make some sort of demand of delegation. Then just sort of send it over to council to say, X, Y, X, Y, Z has happened. This is what I'm proposing that I, I'm going to say to this person, is that okay? So in that way, it's not just the CEO and mayor, it's the CAO and a majority of council can make that, make that.
Wait a second, Mary. We just finished going through 25 delegations. You're suggesting you have a, a group meeting, in-camera meeting on every delegation that wants to present and decide these things? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, not at all. This, it's like if, so as an example, so with, with Nicholas, who just came. There was the request made from him that he has to produce something in writing. There's some questions as to whether or not he should be doing so. And rather, from what he said, it was, it was five different emails, just sort of going back and forth. Just say Lon sends, sends councillor an email saying that, listen, here's a situation. I would like to ask for this in writing. Is councillor okay with this? Three people respond saying yes, and then Lon can then say to that person, councillor would like your delegation in writing.
I have 100% faith in, in the mayor doing this. I don't think all councillors need to be involved. This is a pretty straightforward thing as far as asking somebody to provide their presentation in writing. I think the mayor and Lon will make the decision. He wants to, another set of eyes and wants to ask the mayor, I think there's nothing wrong with that. But I don't think he needs to cooperate with all councillors on every delegation. I just think that it's just.
Put this into like general context? I'm not saying this mayor, I'm saying a mayor in the future. You always have to think about the future. A mayor doesn't like one side of an issue, so they start demanding that everybody on one side of an issue. Put forward a full written presentation. For those that are on their side, they don't make that same request. That's showing bias. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not accusing Penny of doing that. I'm saying that that is a very real possibility that can happen. That is an obstacle which is being put in place for one person to make that determination. And that is a politician who can make that determination. Yes, with the CAO, I understand that. But if politicians are going to get involved as to what a delegation can and can't do. To make this kind, to make these types of decisions, then it should be all of council. So in that way, at least somebody on council can say, hey, listen, I'm calling foul on this thing. I don't see that as being an unreasonable thing, unless it's just the administrators. You can't just give it to one politician to make that choice.
Well, I think you can, that's my view. Your view is that you can't, fine, I get it. Tell it to someone else.
The simple solution is to have all delegations present material in advance in writing. So everyone has to do it. That's. That way we're taking away any favoritism or.
Well, the other clauses like 10.4 to 10.6, the only reason the last clause is in there was because if. You know, if it's myself and the mayor, let's not hear this one, but are you sure? I don't know. You know, maybe not. Let's go, let's take this all to council. So that the next council meeting, you would review everything, and you'd make your resolutions saying, yes, we would like to hear this delegate at the next council meeting. That would only be one, and that's only if it gets that far, and that's only because I was challenged for tonight. Delegation about council only acts through resolution or bylaw. So there's procedures, there's administrative, and then there's council acting on something. So if I ever say councillor doesn't want to hear somebody. Technically, you're right, I need to have a council resolution, because I said councillor doesn't want to do this, so we need a resolution for it. I'm hoping most of it would never get that far, but it's kind of a catch clause. You know, I'm saying, oh, they should present, and Penny's not sure, or the mayor's not sure, you just bring it to council. I, it's the.
Wouldn't the mayor have the discretion of calling for a resolution if there was some concern about whether there was favoritism or not?
You could, but how are you supposed to do that before, if a delegate asks to speak tonight, and you don't have a meeting until tonight? I want to bring it before you guys, and you can't, you can't make a resolution privately, you have to make a resolution.
If the mayor was unhappy or uneasy with making a decision to reject. Could she not, could the mayor, or she may be, or he may be at the time, come to council and say. Let's review this specific one and decide on it, because you don't, the mayor might not feel comfortable in making a decision.
Yes, that, that's specifically what I, what I'm saying should, should happen. But that's why I'm saying that it, like, change the verbiage, so it'd be like CAO and council and like that type of a situation.
We don't want to be coming to council for every delegation.
That's not necessary.
This resolution, it says the CAO and the mayor. Doesn't suggest in any way the mayor on her own, in her infinite business of blah, blah, blah. It's the CAO and the mayor. What else do you want?
Well, most delegations have decided by you. You've been doing this for three years, and I've been here probably within four years before. But I think you've done a pretty good job. I think you'll continue to do the same to itself. But if you want to get some advice from somebody, I don't see why you can't ask the mayor. And I think that's what the mayor's there for.
And, and don't forget, you know, Steve, a valid point about next council. But the next council can amend any bylaw they choose to amend. Right, so, I mean, this is just first reading. There will probably be some changes, and I think this discussion's been helpful. So maybe send your changes or your comments in writing, so that it's.
Councillor could make an amendment. Prior to the second reading.
But, you know, to help, to move this along, let's, you know, if I could ask you to send, send your comments, and we can go back and forth on them. For the record, I have not denied anyone, I have never denied anyone, to my knowledge, an opportunity to speak.
But that's the thing that I'm worried about the most is, are those sections, is for the possibility that a future mayor might, may start denying. And that's my concern.
Well, but, but it's valid, but if, if there's anything in here that, that makes you believe that they shouldn't be speaking. Then I guess it might be covered, right? I mean, we have to, we can't keep taking the abuse and the disrespect that we've been taking for the last several council meetings. It's not productive, it's not appreciated, it's not necessary. So we need to have something in here that provides us with some background. So we need to have something in here that provides us with some background information. And I think it's better for the delegations to know that, that we're getting their presentation and a chance to ask questions if, if, uh, if we need to as well, like, good questions.
The delegation process would be far more effective if we get a chance to, to review the material in advance. So we can, as I said earlier, you know, have an intelligent review of the document and ask intelligent questions. Today, there was no opportunity for that.
So please send in your comments.
We have to vote on the first reading.
We have to vote on first reading, so we have to leave it on the table. So all those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Carry it. Please send in your comments, gentlemen, so that we can make this a better bylaw. Uh, correspondence, information, and announcements. We do have a municipal emergency coordinator employment opportunity.
It's posted on the website.
Okay, posted on the website. I've been in touch with our emergency consultant, uh, and she had some ideas. Do you want it, it's on the website, but do you want brief explanation what it is essentially?
Sure.
Ron?
Well, you, you, your preparedness, your emergency preparedness for the R M, uh, there's a go-between, kind of between, like, there's a, a fire going on. Uh, the M E C would be on site, there'd be the communicator, the go-between, between the fire chief and the mayor or myself, as, you know, or they might even be init- um, involved in, I think somewhere, they do the connect messaging.
Yeah.
Uh, and they, they might even be the communicator too. It depends on what kind of role you want to have with them. Uh, they'll do evaluation of your R M, just to make sure, you know, we're kind of ready. Evaluate your readiness, a lot of other different things. It's on the, it's fairly descrip- job description, so.
And it's full-time or part-time?
Uh, the M E C itself, just a position, is part-time. But there is opportunity, if it's a local person in D B, to add some administrative support uh, to make it a more, a point seven five or a full-time in that, in that category. Uh, but they would be providing support for the fire department, getting the time, time sheets in. Uh, the police department could use some help with the admin side, and the C S Os in the summer, and public works when they're really busy. Sometimes they could work with the um, administrator that's there now and.
So is someone leaving or?
No one's leaving. This is a new position. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was previously filled by, yeah, fire chief, but we're not, I'm not doing that again. That, I think that's a, during a fire, it's a conflict of interest because they can't fulfill both roles.
The fire chief, you should be the same person, but it was a situation that we were, uh, that was our. Trying to change this business, yeah.
How many hours do you have?
Half-time, part-time?
Yeah, two days for M E C, probably, two to three days depending. And then if you get the admin support, it would be four or five days.
Are they paid the same time, the same amount if they are, uh, when they involved in the evolution of an emergency as they are, uh, on time and.
There's an hourly wage. They just get paid, you know, overtime, just like every other staff member that we have.
All right.
Steve, any comments on the M E C position?
No, um, it's good they were finally separating them. Um, I just don't, like, I, I, I'm, I'm just not sure how we can find somebody who is going to be, um, you know, youthful, energetic, uh, willing, and only be there sort of two days a week type thing.
Are you being critical of us seniors?
No, well, and, yeah, we, we won't know until we get some applicants, right? But, um, and we don't know what people, who's out there, we don't know what they're looking for, so worth a try. And it is on our website, so if you know of anyone who's looking for a part-time position that could morph into full-time with some administrative duties, and they have some of the training required for a M E C, that would be great.
There's nobody that we can uh, pull from the fire department aid, like, add one more body to the fire department so they have that secondary role. But then in a situation where um, it, there's that imminent threat to the municipality, they then pull back and they are, they are the M E C, so that at least that way, they're getting additional hours, right? It's not, we, so we would have one additional body on, uh, in the fire department. Just thinking as a way to try to, um, you know, boost the pockets a little bit.
It's definitely worth mentioning to the fire department if it hasn't already been mentioned.
I, as a manager, I would highly, I, I understand where that's coming from, because that's definitely a thought that went through my head. But if, if there's an emerg- fire emergency where the arm of Victoria Beach is under threat, I think we want all hands on deck fighting the fire. That's the only reason there would not have anybody in the fire department on this role. That's just me, that's, but if.
Well, it's such a, it's a relatively small force, so plus or minus one person, you can do something.
I mean, as, as long as there's that understanding that we're always one body above where we need to be, so then that way, they know to pull back. I mean, that would still be their ultimate role there, right? So, yes, I understand for sure, like, you want all bodies there. But you also kind of want somebody who's familiar with what's going on, what's happening, like, in a fire. So then that way, they can relay even more effective information, um, knowing that being the M E C is their number one priority and fire is second, then that kind of helps to, you know, fix that up a little bit, I think. But I, I certainly hear, like, what, what you're saying, because it is hard to pull yourself away sometimes.
Yeah.
A M E C could be a volunteer firefighter, but in the event of an emergency, they're a M E C first and not a firefighter.
Yeah, that might be difficult.
I, I think I agree with, with Lon. It's a little cumbersome.
Yeah.
I think that was objective, though, right? You had this position with the fire chief, and now you're kind of separating the two.
Yeah.
Bring it back into the fire department.
Because there's always this separate.
You're defeating purpose, objectively separating.
Yeah. And um, I inquired about sharing a M E C. Um, you know, there's some great municipal emergency coordinators out there. Our expert said it's, it's too challenging, especially if there's, you know, they're needed in their own community and then something happens in ours, it's just.
We did that for a while with Jim Stinson, didn't we? He was M E C for two years.
Yeah, for a period of time.
If I may, I, I have experience with that, and it did not work at all. There was three municipalities with one M E C, and we never saw them.
There is. The problem is finding the people. That's probably why.
And it's a huge area, like, when you have, but, I mean, that's just my experience.
Well, and that's what, that's what our expert said as well. Generally, it's a difficult, it's a challenge, but I thought it was worth asking.
Who did you ask?
Sorry. She said that, no, she just said sharing is difficult. She's willing to help us out, though. She is our M E C of record at the moment, right? She's on our emergency plan until we get that sorted out. All right, any further discussion on this? We will move on to adjourn. Be it resolved, the November fourth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting of council be adjourned. Next meeting will be in November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M in Victoria Beach. That's the social scene, number three of T Road. A mover. Ian, thank you.
Can I just remind everyone, the meeting in December is December ninth, only one meeting.
Second for this resolution?
All second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Sorry, I'm sorry, December ninth is the only meeting in December, yes.
Okay.